Town, I'd like to take this opportunity to have a moment of silence for our dear friend and colleague, councillor Bill Gabani, who suddenly passed away. Bill was a dedicated councillor who always had the town of Cobalt and its ratepayers at heart. He always did what he thought was best. For everyone, rest in peace, our dear friend. Thank you very much. Item clue, item to disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Don't see any. Item three, approval or amendments of the agenda. Be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the special meeting dated March the first 2022 as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Joe and Pat? All in favor? Thank you. Item four, business. Four point one, bylaw number twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two dash nine agreement with Ontario Clearwater Agency, Aqua. Whereas at the regular meeting of February fifteenth, twenty twenty two, council adopted a resolution number twenty twenty two dash twenty five and directed staff to present a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with the Ontario Clean Water Agency. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty two dash nine, a bylaw for agreement of services between Ontario Clean Water Agency and the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, a second, and a third time and finally passed this Thursday of March twenty twenty two. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and the clerk. A mover and a seconder, please. Pat and Angela? Is there any discussion on the bylaw? Silvie's here to answer questions if anyone has questions. See no questions, no comments. All in favor? Opposed?
Could we have a recorded vote, please?
Okay. Yes, we could have you got a. Okay, you. Councillor Adset.
For.
Councillor Anderson?
For.
Councillor Dubay?
For.
Councillor Johnson?
For.
Councillor Wilcox?
Against.
Mayor Otmer for. Two, three, four, five, five to one. The motion is good. Gary. Okay, item seven, adjournment. Be it resolved that the special meeting council be adjourned at six thirty four. A mover and a seconder, please. Pat and Joe? All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move right into our committee to hold meeting. Once again, I'll call the meeting to order. Disclosure pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Don't see any, okay. Approval amendments of meeting agenda. Be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the committee to hold meeting dated March the first twenty twenty two as presented. Mover and a seconder. Matthew and Joe? Any discussion, comments? All in favor? Gary, thank you very much. Item four, approval of minutes. Be it resolved that council approved the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting of council, February fifteenth, twenty twenty two. A mover and a seconder? Joe and Matt? Is there any discussion on minutes as presented? Comments? All in favor? Thank you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Thank you, Sophie. Any inquiries from members of the general public? Okay. We have delegate item seven. Delegations and presentations. Seven point one, Jim Diamond will make a presentation on the official plan, the first draft. There he is. Flora's here, Mr. Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. I trust you can hear me well. I'll make this short and sweet. I have provided to the town of Cobalt the first draft of the official plan after starting a project spring of last year. Just a very quick summary of what we've done is we've spent quite a bit of time in the town. We've met with lots of people, we interviewed lots of people, studied the town and the boxes and boxes of background information that you have related to the town. We have met with all of the provincial agencies that are involved in the official plan process. And we've also held a workshop on dealing with a big strategy, big picture issues. What do we need to do in Cobalt to make things happen? We prepared a background report, we call it a background scan in September of twenty twenty one and prepared the draft official plan in November. When I started this process, I promised John Hodgson that I would provide the town with a straightforward, simple official plan, not a rubber stamp of another official plan. And we've done that. We prepared a very simple, straightforward document that I think deals with the issues that you need to deal with from a planning process and strategic development perspective for the next twenty five years. And I know that the quote is sometimes credited to Mark Twain, but I don't think it was. If I had more time, I'd make it shorter. I've been in touch with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and told them, don't expect a hundred and fifty page official plan from Cobalt. It's twenty five pages and get ready for it. And they seemed enthused by that comment. So I'm hopeful that we can get through the process and do it the way you wanted to do it. There's many constraints to development in Cobalt that I'm aware of. There's mine hazards and contaminated lands. There's historic sites. And we need to find a way to balance the constraints with the opportunities that are there. And what I've learned in the time I've spent in Cobalt is that the people there understand that there's a tremendous opportunity here. But we need to be able to explore that opportunity and provide that opportunity. And I'm wondering if the administrator can put on schedule A of the official plan. We'll just go through the schedules very quickly, John. So there's three main maps that go with the official plan. Schedule A sets out the future land use of the town. And I want to identify that the first thing on that schedule is priority intensification areas. Those are areas that we would like to do everything we can to encourage that they develop as quickly as possible. There's, this plan shows what the future development could be. There is environmental protection and hazard areas, which of course you can't develop, but by and large it shows a future of full development of the town of Cobalt. We can flip to the next schedule. Then the next schedule deals with transportation and servicing. Now, in my role as a planner for developers, when I'm looking at a town to develop, I want to know where the pipes are in the ground. Because that to me says this will be available for development immediately if all the other tests are met. And so we think this is an important schedule to show where you can develop and connect to municipal services, which are readily available to support development. And that's the intent of that purpose. The third map. If you can, John. Sets out the development constraints. And I talked initially about development constraints. I will admit, when I got into this job, I thought, how are we ever going to do anything in Cobalt? Because of all the constraints related to heritage areas, mines, mine sites, mine hazards, wildlife, wildfire risk, you name it, it's there. But we prepared a plan that says this is what we'd like to see happen. And this is how it can happen despite these constraints. So it's a very positive, forward moving official plan. Despite its brevity. It, I think it covers everything that needs to be done. So my ask at this meeting and in my presentation is that committee and council read and comment on the draft plan as it is now. I'm happy if you want to contact me directly, if that's okay with the clerk and the C O, and we can have a chat about it. I promise to get back to you. This is a project that I feel personally interested in at this stage, and I will respond to you as quickly as I can. I'd like to start the public review process in the spring. And before I do that, I need to get your comments and prepare a second draft of a plan that we can then present to the public. I also need to have all of the agencies in the province that are involved in planning, review the document. And I've asked them to expedite their review of that process. So having done that, our process is that between now and June, we'd like to prepare a second draft of the plan based on your comments and move forward to consultation with the province so that by summertime, we can have an official plan that we know is acceptable to the province, that we know addresses the interests of the people of Cobalt. And we'll find that balance that I talked about between protection of the environment and the historical resources and providing for development of the community. So with that, I don't propose to review a plan. What I have talked to John Hodgson about is setting up a special meeting of council or committee where we can set an hour aside and we can talk about issues related to the plan. I can do it as an educational session if you would like. But I would really like to get the municipalities' comments on the document within the next four weeks so that we can move forward and ensure that you have a document that you can approve within this term of council. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any questions? Hey, Joe?
Somebody came up to me and asked me about tiny homes. Now, we have a lot of small, really small properties here, and I'm thinking that tiny houses would be perfect for these locations. But their bylaws prohibits them. How do we go about to change this? And look and do a little bit more research into tiny homes. It's the wave of the future. I don't want to be stuck behind like how Elliot Lake did. They went into retirement homes and they made a killing with it. And town survived.
Well, your question is timely. Because your issue with tiny homes is your zoning bylaw. And today I talked to John Hodgson about the need to update your zoning bylaw as part of this process. And I won't get into the conversation now. But since I've been working with the town, I've seen a number of things that have been prohibiting development that in my view is desirable and appropriate, but it's in your zoning bylaw. So you can't issue a building permit unless the use complies with your bylaw. And in the very near future, in fact, I sent it to the town today. You'll receive a proposal from me to tag on a zoning bylaw update as part of this process so it can all be done by September. And we can deal with things like tiny homes and commercial developments and all of those things that you need to do to say that the chief building official can then issue a building permit. Tiny homes is complicated because they're trailers typically. There's building code issues related to the size of them, but we can work that stuff out in the zoning bylaw. And in the official plan, we provide the policies that say we're going to do this in zoning.
I understand they're trailers, but once you build the house and you build a little foundation, you take those wheels off, it does not become a trailer after.
That's right. But then it has to comply with the building code.
Yeah.
Good job. Angela?
My understanding is the building code doesn't cover tiny homes as far as materials, electrical, plumbing. They don't come under the building code at this time, so is that not something we'd have to cover under a policy?
Well, they don't come under the building code because they're trailers. And once they become buildings on a permanent foundation, they become subject to the building code.
Okay.
So what I interpret that, that if someone's building a tiny home to go on there, yes, it's a trailer, but in order to put it on our property and have it there for us to say, yes, you can, then it's got to come up to the regular building code as far as you know, construction type and everything.
Unless it stays a trailer. And you have a mobile home zone already in your bylaw that allows mobile homes, it would just be a question of amending your bylaw to allow people to live in trailers in places other than the mobile home zone. So it's a great example of things that you could do in your zoning that would enable the C B O to issue a building permit.
Go ahead, Joe.
Going back to your mobile home, and you're saying, isn't there a minimum size for mobile home? Because these tiny homes are a little smaller than a mobile home.
Well, that's where we run into building code issues. And I think that the building code, and don't quote me on this because I'm not a C B O, but I think the building code would allow you to build a four hundred and forty square foot dwelling. Whereas a mobile home has to be six fifty. So at, 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 at the four fifty point, it could still be a trailer.
That's right. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, I've looked into tiny homes myself for quite some time now. And most of them are built on site, they're not built offsite and hauled there by wheels. The only reason that the wheels thing is because there's a person who has one who's put it on wheels in order to move it. Because our bylaws don't allow for that to happen right now. So he's got to build it offsite to get it to where he's going. So it's, doesn't really conform to trailer regulations, I don't think. It's built according to building code standards as far as I know. Yeah. Okay. No other questions?
Yeah, I want.
Your email address? I think we got it downstairs.
You?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm real easy, jim@municipalplanning.ca.
Okay, thanks a lot, Jim. Much appreciated.
Thank you. I look forward to be back in Cobalt in April or May. And I look forward to your comments on the official plan.
We look forward to seeing you. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Okay, I guess we took care of the business arising from delegations and presentations. Nine, staffing committee reports, nine point one, Public Works. David, you got, have you got anything for us, sir? We're gaining on it?
No.
Yeah.
Little by little, George.
Hey? Little by little, that's good. No, it's, it's looking good. It's looking good. It's, I want to congratulate the guys that they've, they've done a super job during that storm and roads were cleared, there was very few complaints. Good. Yeah. Okay, anybody have any questions for Public Works? Joe? Okay, animal control, you've got the report here. Is there anything on there you'd like to ask about? Okay. Bylaw enforcement. No questions there? Pete's been pretty busy, I understand.
Yeah, with the snowfall, moving cars and stuff, and that's, that's good.
I was like working on with Pete and so on.
Go ahead, Matt.
Question, David, actually. How are people complying when you're asking them to move their vehicles? Are they doing it immediately? Are you getting much pushback? Have you had to do anything this year?
No, they haven't had to do anything.
So they're complying and?
Yeah, they can't, they're not fast on it, but they are, some people are moving somewhere. Irregulars that are moving.
So what do we do in that case? Because I know up on Nickel there, we had quite a berm around a guy who didn't want to move.
I'll keep telling him.
Oh, Pete did, did go there?
But then they moved right back. You got him the other side and rode the motor on the other side and he was like, oh.
What does that do to your labor for the day? I mentioned I have a great deal with operations when you have someone like that who blocks road removal.
Oh, yeah, you can't tell the road problem.
Anyway, go back the next day and the allocation of labor.
And if you get a fire, well, you probably won't get down the street.
The fire truck could be a lot bigger, but yeah.
Or ambulances itself.
Are you finding it's better from previous years though, now that we have the?
He's doing it, that's all.
Okay, great.
Okay, no other questions, no other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Be it resolved that council accept the staffing committee reports as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Matt and Pat? We've had discussion already on that. All in favor? Gary? Ten, ten point one. Bylaw to adopt an election policy for the corporation of the town of Cobalt. Steve, could you lighten us on this one? This is just a regular yearly thing in an election year that you have to.
Yes, your worship. The policy that's brought out every four years as you come closer to a municipal election in the fall. So this is just presenting that we are preparing for the municipal election.
We'll have a bylaw at our next meeting and.
Yes, your worship.
Ten point two, bylaw to establish the use of corporate resources during an election policy.
Your worship, again, if this is, the protocols put into place for this being an election year. Again, this is so we're using the resources for the town of Cobalt.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ten point three will be, is there, sorry, Angela, go ahead.
Are we developing anything to allow people to vote electronically if need be? Just in case something happens with COVID again?
We haven't given it any thought. I would.
Your worship, we haven't looked down that process at this time, but we are getting notices from the A and C T O about the possibility of having to implement an election or electronic election. So we're just watching it at this time and seeing how the regulations within the province are progressing.
Yeah, because I've seen a lot of write-ups on it through the subscriptions we get as councillors.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Ten point three is a resolution to amend the capitalization threshold for other items from twenty five hundred to five thousand dollars to allow for inflation. If you wouldn't mind, Steve, if you want to give us some brief overview on this one also?
Yes, your worship. Resolution here is to amend that for other items from two twenty five hundred, five thousand to include more inflation this year.
Any comments, questions? No? Okay. Ten point four will be a resolution to direct any surplus deficits, surplus or deficits be transferred to the working capital reserves. That's a yearly ongoing thing that has to happen every year when we, when we do our budget process. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Items for council information. Ten point five, OSIF funding notice of two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty three dollars for eligible projects related to water, wastewater, roads, bridges and culverts. Ten point six is Fednor funding notice of ninety three thousand dollars to upgrade tech park, both historical mining camp and family project. Park. Ten point seven is twenty twenty two apportionment for Cobalt. It's my understanding that our cost has gone up a thousand dollars to D S A. And ten point eight is a letter for council for tiny house queries. This was a couple who had sent in a query about the tiny houses, and this is why we're, Joe has given us that a little bit of an overview on that. Okay. Be it resolved that council accept the items for council direction and information as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Pat and Angela? Is there any discussion on any of those items? Go ahead.
Just wondering, do we have a ten point, is it a bit more funding? Do we have a budget put out for that, what we're going to do?
Evan, could you, you're working on that, I believe, at this point in time?
Yeah, it's, I don't believe we have much more than the nine three that they're supplying. We're using the grant to help.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Do you have?
Oh. Uh, there is a bylaw and I personally, I don't have a look at it. I think, I think John has that. But yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen a budget personally, but John has told me that it's not happening.
Go ahead, Joe.
A ten point five, basically almost same question as Pat for that two hundred and eight thousand. Is there any plans for like?
That will be discussed in the budget process. That's, yes, yes. Angela? I know what your question is.
Um, I'm sorry, but you guys had a technical glitch, or I did, because I didn't hear any of that, and I got kicked out and came back in.
Oh, well, welcome back.
Oh, recap maybe?
Okay, where did you get kicked out?
I didn't hear a word of what Evan said.
Oh, okay, then you, okay, rewind to Evan.
Well, I see, I see that John's here. I didn't know he was in the meeting, but John may have a better explanation for the, the exact budget of our project than I do. Because I, I don't believe I've gone, I've reviewed fully the budget yet, so.
If I may, then your worship, the budget is a standard federal government municipal cost sharing. And there's a detailed proposal on what we talked about. This is going back almost a year now. If you want, I will share the proposal again with council. It still isn't a formal announcement. We haven't heard from the Speaker of the House, the federal M P, but it's a fairly detailed one, and we're already looking at maybe piggybacking with the, some more grant applications are coming in. But basically what it is, is a static and non-static exercise areas, kids for kids areas, a shade area, that kind of stuff. I know councillor Adset had mentioned the power upgrade. Not only are we looking at a power upgrade, but we have, where we're looking at in-kind lighting, there are a number of light, historic lights that we, we have that we want to have a lighted area down there also. So it's a, it's a detailed proposal and of course, we were waiting for the, the actual approval by the federal government, but that's what it is. It's upgrading the park so that there's more use by the community of all ages and all exercise ability in all ages.
Take care of everybody's questions then, okay? Nothing else? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Item eleven, other business. I just have a little thing. Former mayor Sortoreto is receiving a posthumous award on Friday on C G T T radio apparently for the tireless work she's done when she was mayor in Cobalt here. So if anybody wants to tune into C J T T, I think it's at seven thirty in the morning, I'm not sure. Her brother Bert will be accepting it for her. Okay? We have no closed session, we have no business arising. Adjournment, be it resolved that committee to hold meeting of council be adjourned. Adjournment, be it resolved that committee to hold meeting of council be adjourned at seven o'clock. All in favor? Thank you very much. Oh, mover and seconder, sorry, 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 mover and seconder, Joe and Matt, all in favor? Hurt before the horror, sorry.